Next item up is public items. Members of the vote are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear in the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please, if you did, just make a public comment within the next five minutes. I have this blue signature here that nobody has signed yet before. So if that does not put you in government forward at this time, if anybody has a public comment that you would like to make. Is that, yeah, fix it before, sir. Give your name and address for the right.
Billy Crum, six, six, three, three, Wood Street. Today is the, uh, the second time in as many council meetings you'll be discussing, um, a bond using debt to finance things that we could pay for with cash on hand, with cash from our TIF fund. Um, I wish I had spoken out against it last meeting, but I'm here to speak out against it this one, both the issue last time and the one for you today. Thank you.
Mr. Crum? Okay, anyone else? See if anyone else can report this time. I will close out the public section of the room. Next item up is the consent agenda. And all items under the, this, uh, considered to be retained by the city council and may be enacted by motion. No server discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which case that item may be removed. Public consent agenda items considered several. There are two items on this evening, so does anybody want to have either of those removed? I see nobody wanting either of those items removed. I would entertain a motion. Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, I move to the council approve consent to agenda items. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I have a second then.
I'm going to flip through the motion in a second.
Councilmember Shaveta. Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item up is the mayor's report. Uh, and as such, I always like to say, kind of, I was speaking along on last couple of weeks, so people kind of know what's happening in the city. And, uh, just go through these real quick. I and several councilmembers attended the lunch and learn for city employees. I and a couple of city, uh, employees attended the Northeast Leadership Alumni, uh, meeting. And then a couple of our councilmembers attended the Public Department Committee Meeting. Appreciate you guys doing that. Uh, I and our police chief attended the Prairie Village Police Chief Robertson's retirement celebration. Uh, as you might know, Chief Robertson is now our Johnson County Sheriff, so, uh, congrats again. First contingents in serving the public and, uh, John, the Johnson County. I and several councilmembers and staff attended the Forty-Ninth Street Public Meeting. Uh, several citizens showed up and signed their right of way at the meeting, so, uh, avoid early stopovers, I guess. Uh, I and several councilmembers and staff attended the Northeast Chamber of Commerce State of the Cities Address. Uh, that particular address, all Northeast cities got the opportunity to talk about their accomplishments during 2024, and we had a lot to share, so. I and the council president, Mr. Engel, prepared an agenda. Uh, Mr. Engel set an accounting commissioners meeting, and we're available to get testing, although we did not, uh, on the desire to purchase the old Antioch building, uh, the Antioch Library Building, excuse me. And, uh, and they have agreed to allow us to purchase that, and we'll be going forward with that purchase, uh, either first of next week. Sometime we'll be, uh, taking, taking that, uh, as next step. I and several councilmembers and staff took a pick at City Hall. Uh, and the chiefs of power have supported their run for another Super Bowl win. Uh, how about those chiefs and my, this is, this is a little article on, yeah, but I, I had that storage from the last one, so. Hopefully, maybe we'll get a new one. So let's see, what else do we have? Councilmembers attended Zoom meeting with a community for all ages, uh, incentivizing universal design, along with family development. The councilmember also attended the MTC Foundation Annual Meeting. The councilmember attended the Mark Zoom Meeting with the First Suburbs Coalition. Uh, so that's the things I had, if I missed anything from the other people that I was unaware of. All right, well, that will conclude the mayor's report. Next item up is council items, and the first item we have on it is, uh, considered or authorized purchase of, considering, I guess, mobile data terminals. And we have the chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What you have before you is the purchase of twelve mobile data terminals for our patrol cars. Uh, basically, those are computers that we use to, uh, receive dispatch calls, uh, in the, in the field. They also operate our, uh, cameras in the units. Uh, we replace them around every, uh, five, eight years, depending on, you know, how much technology is advanced. And, uh, we buy semi-rugged or ruggedized units, uh, for the cars because they have to go through a lot of, uh, whether the heat and the cold in the units when they're sitting outside, the vibration from being inside the car. Uh, we did put this in the twenty twenty-five budget. We are fifteen hundred dollars over budget. Uh, that's because it was out of my part where, uh, we, uh, one of our units has a specialized, um, uh, NDT in it because we set it up a little bit differently, uh, to allow railroads with civilian staff or, uh, for our trainees when we're doing, uh, FTO training. So that unit, uh, is fully recognized because they don't make a semi-ruddy. So it's fifteen hundred dollars extra. That's, that was additional on my part, so, uh, we do have the funds in that account to cover the fifteen hundred dollar mortgage. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Silver.
You might have answered this already, but I just want to clarify, um, eleven of them were bundled under item, grouping number one and one of seven five. So the one that they didn't mention as the specialized item is the one under five, nine, five.
The, the eleven are computers, actual laptop computers are semi-ruddy. Um, the twelfth one is a tablet without keyboard, um, because we set it up differently, but they don't make a semi-ruddy version of that. It has to be fully realized, so that's the difference.
Any other questions for the chief? See no other questions. Uh, I would entertain a motion for that item. Mr. Silver.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the purchase of the mobile data terminals for the police department.
Okay, and Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, your second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like the next item up is, uh, consider approval and agreement with Johnson County for funding of the twenty twenty-five street drainage improvement project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our twenty twenty-five street and drainage improvement projects includes a replacement or lining of stormwater pipe, a mill and overlay, and spot replacement of curb and sidewalk. And the project location is sixty-first street, uh, east of Antioch, Hardy from fifty-nine, no, Hardy from Johnson Drive to sixty-first street, and Fifty-Ninth Terrace, Sixtieth Street, and Sixtieth Terrace, east of Hardy, this is city limits. In twenty twenty-four, we applied for Johnson County Stormwater Funds, and we were happy to find out that we were eligible to receive the funds. The agreement approved, uh, sorry, I apologize, I can't talk tonight. The agreement lists the policies and procedures for obtaining reimbursement and also allows us to reimburse fifty percent of the construction cost for stormwater not to exceed five hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, design is underway with construction estimated to begin, um, late spring or early summer, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the company? Is it a motion you may make or do you have a question? I would entertain a motion then.
I'll make it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a minute. All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an agreement with Johnson County for funding the twenty twenty-five street and storm drainage improvements project.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Go ahead. Oh, please, Mr. Cozmeier, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, your second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is consider resolution of intent to finance utility undergrounding.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Next item on the agenda is resolution of intent to finance utility undergrounding, uh, project with issuance of debt. This is the exact same type resolution that you approved at your last meeting. Uh, as background, Capital Electric, which is a subcontractor for Evergy, has already started to do the utility undergrounding out on China Mission Parkway. Uh, that's a five million dollar project that the city council approved, uh, and put in the budget, I think, first in twenty-three, and then we updated the budget in twenty twenty-four. Uh, should be completed in mid-July, we hope. It is staff's current plan to pay cash for that project, pay for it out of our TIF budget. That has been our intention all along. However, as the mayor mentioned, we just closed on the library. Uh, staff are ready to close on the library. The board of county commissioners just approved, approved the ratification of that contract. Uh, and so your staff is looking for highest and best use for that library project for the benefit of our community. And as we're doing that, we're looking at financing for whatever might come our way. Uh, we're investigating a variety of things that, uh, would benefit that site and our public in turn. Uh, one of the things, as we've talked to our financial advisor and bond counsel, is that it would make sense, just as a tool in the toolbox, that if something were to come our way, that we would have the ability to bond this. So, for example, if we decided we wanted to develop the library property and we were going to borrow money, it might be advantageous to include that in the bond financing. So, uh, approval of this resolution just enacts the ability to do that. Our intent is still to pay cash, just like it is to buy the library with cash. Uh, this, this resolution does not prevent us from paying cash for the utility undergrounding, nor does it obligate us to borrow money. We have no intent currently to borrow money for the utility undergrounding. It's simply a tool in the toolbox that, to be quite honest, makes perfect sense to staff. If we need it, we would utilize it, we would have to come back to council and ask. That's all, this is just an acting order, a resolution, to make sure that that's option is available to us. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Engle?
Um, is there a timeline where, um, we would, where you would know whether, um, it's best to go with the cash option or the bonding option?
The, there's a, there's a sixty-day look back on this resolution, so it would be within sixty days.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we would, if somebody were to show up tomorrow and say, we've got the grooviest thing in the whole world, and it's going to cost us more, more money than we're comfortable spending, and therefore we would want to bond for whatever that groovy thing is, it may behoove us, it may not, to include either the cost of the library and/or the cost of utilities undergrounding in that project. I can't tell you that it will, I can't tell you that it won't, but this, we have to pass these resolutions before we spend the money. So that was the reason that before we could close on the library, we approved the last resolution. Before we pay our first invoice for the utility undergrounding, which is actually, uh, already started, we have to have this passed. So that's, we're simply just trying to get in before the invoice is paid, because then there's a sixty-day look back.
Okay.
A lot of information that answer your question.
Yeah, I think so. So that means that in the next two months or so, not like in six months.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, there, there's a ticking clock on our ability to do this.
Perfect, thanks.
And that's yours, Mr. Engle, or you have some? All right, Mr. Silver, you have some?
As long as I've been on council, this, we haven't done this, but are there any projects to come to mind that, that we use this bond option?
Uh, we, well, not this option quite like this. We borrowed money for the community center. Uh, we borrowed money in the past. We generally have chose the cash finance, which I think is a very wise decision if we have the means to do so. And we currently have the means to do so here, and that is our intent. We are simply just reserving the right to do that. So, uh, probably, this is the first time we've ever done this ordinance to preserve the right to borrow after the fact. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Usually, we've done beforehand, hey, we're going to borrow money for this. For this, we're just simply enacting it because we don't know what's going to happen, whatever.
Any other questions, Mr. Engle? Let's see, no questions, I would entertain a motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I move council approve a resolution of intent to reimburse the city for the cost of utility undergrounding project through the future issuance of debt.
Can I have a motion, I have a second, Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, your second.
Madam Clerk, her motion is second.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We just got through that quick, quick. Looks like our next item up is our monthly finance report. Hold on, first, we need to get it great.
I'm so excited. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so before you, uh, you should have got it with your packet, is the December twenty twenty-four, uh, financial report and investment report. Um, as this coincides with our end of the year, uh, which you're all aware, December thirty-first marks the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. I thought it might be beneficial just to go through some key financial highlights, since you essentially have preliminary numbers through the end of the year in front of you. Um, if at any point you want me to stop, uh, let me know, I'm going to make it relatively quick and painless, hopefully. Um, so then this will kind of coincide if you want to flip through, feel free, if not, that's okay too. Um, so as far as revenues go, you'll see that practically every revenue that we have came in over budget, which is absolutely wonderful. Um, it means that we're conservatively budgeting, but also that the economy is doing well, there's decent indicators going on. Um, the only one that came in close, uh, slightly under budget, was the, say, use tax, which is to be expected. Um, you'll see that we have some overperforming revenue sources, uh, the Marion Community Center. Uh, they did amazing this year and came in at over three hundred thousand dollars over budget. Uh, also, our real property taxes came in largely over budget, so, um, those are amazing numbers to see. Uh, on the flip side, you'll see that our expenditures came in under budget in almost every case, especially when you're looking at our significant expenditure categories. Um, you know, for example, our salaries and benefits came in almost three hundred thousand dollars under budget, which really just goes to show how awesome the city is doing, managing personnel and overtime and all those things. Um, and again, the Marion Community Center, I know that they're working really hard on their budget. So not only on revenues did they come in high, but on expenditures, they came in at ninety-six percent of their budget, so, goodos to them. Um, and then when we look at our metrics, obviously, we had a deficit when it comes to the net position change, so we did overspend this year when you look at expenditures compared to revenues. Um, however, they were all planned for. We anticipated going into the budget for twenty twenty-four that you would overspend a little with some improvement projects that were in place. So, um, it was not over budget unplanned, it was planned to under CIP. And then as far as cash and investments go, obviously, we have about fifty-nine million dollars in investments. Um, about ninety-one percent of those are in federal securities, which is a really safe, comfortable place to put the money if you're going to. Um, and then we do about almost nine percent in a cash, um, a cash account that's gaining a little bit lower levels of interest, but still, really, it's easier for us to access our money when we spread out where we're investing it. And then we look at our outstanding obligations. We still, um, are paying on the general obligation fund for the bond for the community center, that is from twenty eighteen. Um, and then we have the I thirty-five redevelopment fund commitment, uh, which was the twenty-six point eight million dollar one that we're also paying on. Um, a few key observations, if you're looking at the year, uh, sales tax collections increased by about point eight percent, uh, which is really driven by some moderate growth in, uh, auto sales and other retail categories. Um, again, the Marion Community Center is going strong and had a really strong performance this year with their memberships and programming. Um, and then when it comes to expenditure management, um, savings were achieved across multiple areas, including salaries, fire services, and utility. So I would love to see that for twenty twenty-five as well. Um, and then the last one, uh, for capital investments, we had a few noticeable purchases, some planned for, some not, with our HVAC system upgrades and, um, a large amount of, uh, different tools and a Bobcat utility vehicle. So, um, it's amazing that we're, we have the money to be able to invest in those types of things. Uh, but yeah, so our highlights is that our sales tax rate is still very competitive at the nine point four. Um, for this area, our bond rating is triple A, the highest it can be, stable. Um, we have debt retirement coming, will be fully paid off by twenty twenty-seven for the twenty eighteen bonds. Um, and then our assessed property valuation is still holding very strong, at ten hundred ninety million dollars, um, with about fifty percent commercial and then the rest residential and other. Um, and then we keep seeing that increase in our households, um, every census. So as you can see, it was a very strong year for us financially, and I'm very excited to be a part of that. So I think, uh, next time, we actually end our twenty twenty-four, we close out the year and make it so we can't book anything else at the end of this month. Um, we wait and see if any invoices are going to come in that we need to charge to last year, uh, so we give a little bit of grace on that. And so hopefully, at the next council meeting, I have a report to give you that will highlight some more of this information, um, and that you can take with you and will be part of the packet for the public as well. But that is just kind of a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, but like I said, next time, I'll make sure you have a little bit more meat and potatoes on that once the numbers feel a little more secure for end of the year means.
Any questions for Madam Clerk?
I'm so anxious, thank you guys.
Did you? All right, looks like, uh, next item up, I believe, is going to be our community development update.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, our councilmembers, Prime Director of Community Development Director. Again, first of the year, just, uh, our grant applications opened up. Uh, I think the weather had a pretty big sneak in, but I can hear our applications we had, because obviously, some pretty, um, early weather out there, so. Um, didn't get a lot of applications in, but pretty much like last year, we were kind of the same situation, anticipating as the weather warmed up and folks, uh, get outside, they'll see projects they want to do, and the applications will start to come in. So again, uh, anybody that has projects for, um, kind of sustainability or any kind of exterior improvements, please, um, see Mr. David Easley, who would like to get them started on those grant programs. Um, just an update, quick update on Mayor Grant's station. Uh, it continues to go, um, as scheduled, uh, pace. They are now working, uh, primarily on the West Department Complex as well as the, uh, and then these are going to be in between those two complexes, so, uh, they continue again, as I said, in the own schedule. A couple, also, things that we are working through, um, in this time of the year. First one is our community rating system. We have a five-year, uh, renewal of that. Uh, community rating system is a FEMA program. It's a program where, uh, for, um, communities participate in the CRS program, receive a reduction in the rates of flood insurance for the residents. So, uh, we have our five-year renewal of that, so we're working together all the documents and getting preparation for their, uh, site visit for that. Then we're also, our end of the year, uh, stormwater pollution, uh, report that we do, essentially, this report that we do to the state, to meet EPA requirements for all the things we do to reduce the amount of pollution that enters our stormwater system. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Dyer? I see no questions. Thank you, sir. Okay, next item up is single hauler update. Here, Mr. Gard, get into the, hurry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a quick update. You've seen this slide a number of times before. We're still on schedule with our single hauler, um, process. The, uh, RFP is out to bid right now. That bid does close on February fourteenth. There is a mandatory pre-bid meeting for any haulers that are wishing to bid on the project. That's this Friday at ten AM. It's obviously open to the public. It's included on our webpage and, um, on the city's calendar online as well. Um, following that process, um, we're hopeful to have a number of bids. Um, we really don't know at this point, but we're hopeful to have a number of bids, uh, come in, and then the work group that was established, uh, to write the RFP can evaluate those bids, um, come up with a recommendation to then bring to the city council and hopefully a work session type of meeting. So we can kind of go over everything that we've done up to this point, everything in the bids, everything in the RFP, and we can kind of just comprehensively have a conversation about next steps before you all have to make any decisions. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gard? Very, Mr. Cozmeier.
Um, how soon after all of the bids are received, are you going to have, um, estimates on like how much people's, uh, monthly cost will be?
Well, as soon as I read them, I'll know immediately.
Well, will you be able to provide?
Yeah, of course. Um, um, it's just going to depend when I can get that work group together, to be honest. Um, hopefully, within a week or so after the bids, we can all get together to kind of start to review those. I want to make sure that once the bids come in, that it's a pretty extensive bidding process as to what kind of documentation the haulers are going to need to fill out, make sure they have insurance requirements all the time, so just I want to make sure that those are valid bids before I kind of release them out into the world. Um, but hopefully, there's going to be a number of them that we can start looking at from the work group. Um, I know we have a couple of councilmembers on that work group too, uh, before I bring them back to you all for consideration.
Any questions, girl?
So the meeting on Friday, um, are you expecting that you're going to walk through it with all of the people, and then they're going to ask questions after that?
Yeah, that's exactly the case.
And it's here at City Hall?
It is, yes, it's upstairs in the community training room. Um, I'm going to be walking through the RFP, um, pretty extensively, and I'm not going to read it verbatim, but pretty extensively. Uh, we also did have to issue an addendum. There's been a number of questions already, mostly clarifying questions from the RFP, um, that we've had to answer, that we've issued. Um, so I'll walk through that as well. Um, and then if there are any additional questions, I'll make sure that those are answered at that time, if I can.
And just to clarify, that, that, that meeting is required for someone to submit a bid, so you would, so you would have the opportunity to talk to anybody that submits a bid.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Because of the work group, like I saw the RFP, or the, um,
Addendum.
The addendum. And I'm sure when you go through the RFP with them, you'll make sure you know that some of the extra questions we asked were not mandatory for selection, that they were, hey, the city also covers this service. If we would like to outsource it, do you provide it? And if you win the bid, could you do it?
Absolutely.
Good point. And actually, I've actually just before, but the mayor's group is, and all the mayors in Kansas are, have been talking about this particular subject. Have you been aware of that, have you been involved in any of that?
No. I'm happy to talk to anyone about it, though.
There, there's a lot of other cities that are discussing this right now.
They're watching us, all right, good.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, well, uh, next item up is just informational items. We have a public art committee, Ed Met, as I mentioned earlier, and, uh, we have the minutes, and if I have any questions, perhaps, hopefully, on that, we're going to cover that. All right, well, gosh, we're just kind of collecting our own here. But, uh, I understand we have a executive session, but do you have anything to have for, from staff, Mr. Engle?
Just, just two quick items. Uh, we have a legislative lunch scheduled with our state reps, uh, February fourth. Please RSVP with Caitlin if you are interested in being able to attend, that would be in Topeka, I believe. Uh, we, in the past, we caravan, we, the city is, just put everybody in a car, and we're happy to do that again. Uh, and then city council goals and objectives are due by Friday, February fourteenth. It's not required that you have any. We are amply busy, but we just, we have not received any. But as a reminder, those are budget goals, so those would be goals that as we start to put together the fiscal year twenty-six budget, what are some things that the council would like to see? We will carry over all of the existing ones unless we have accomplished them, but again, we're not necessarily looking for more, but.
Do the ones with Valentine's get more consideration?
That is up to your allies.
Any questions, or, Mr. Engle?
I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
So there are some specific goals and objectives that we, if we want to keep them, um, but there are initiatives that we previously discussed as part of those goals and objectives that have not been implemented, that don't, they aren't goals and objectives, right? But there are things we have talked about as falling under those. Can we just shoot those as an email, as things, reminders?
Sure, absolutely.
Rather than including them in a new document?
Sure.
And say, hey, what about this?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
The result. Well, uh, I understand that there is an executive session this evening. Have we ratified how much time we're going to need for?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. I will, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the governing body recess into executive session for preliminary discussion related to property acquisition pursuant, pursuit to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, V six, which allows the governing body to hold a Which allows the governing body to hold an executive session for preliminary discussion of property acquisition. Present will be the governing body, a city attorney, city administrator, public works director and public. Public works directors, I'm sorry, community development director, I signed, just walked out the door. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at eight oh five.
Okay, we have one more second.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Mayor, one more second.
Councilmember Laking.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cosmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero, and we are going upstairs.
So that's correct.
Right, because because there are a bunch of us. We have to come back down to a turn. Yes, eight oh five.
Anybody's welcome to stay if you would like, if you aren't on that list, it's going upstairs, but um when we come back, we'll probably adjourn. Upstairs is where we're at.
Did you catch he said that he doesn't intend to finance, but literally on a direct address as resolution of intent?
I think so, and they did a drone survey, so.
Yeah, I mean, never believe the lead, though, but yeah, in ten years, I haven't seen this, I haven't seen this before, so, we'll see.
It's on our list, we run radar on it.
Yeah, yeah.
I stand at our house on this, so I can't do it. Anybody else? Ms. Rickell?
Thank you. And we had entertained three of you in my office this morning. Um for the call on six.
I did, I was like.
Are you?
No, we're staying for the work session. I know it's optional, but I mean. Well, it's the court, I mean, I didn't.
Oh, it's just like when I was there.
Well, I just wanted to hear.
Yeah, I haven't, yeah, I haven't got anything back on there yet, so I don't know, I don't think we have anything going on.
I'm trying to say a little bit seriously, but.
I know, I haven't seen any calls.
I just figured. Why do I need to hook those up? Oh, yeah, I'll text one, right, the city vehicle, yeah, because the turn has Bluetooth connection. It's not my truck, my truck has Bluetooth.
No, I was just talking about people coming home like you.
I don't think the police interceptors have Bluetooth. That's what I'm driving around on.
I thought something's missing.
Yeah.
I'll see a little bit.
If we get dispatched to the fire call, and if we're out there, we don't know. On the radio. Well, but. But if only you were standing by it for me, because. Again, you hear ours, if we're dispatched to a fire on the radio, but if we're not sent. Right, unless you're listening to fires too. I didn't actually have a hardware scanner, that's expensive, but you know, whatever the smartphone app is, I had no idea. And we're, we are dispatched to. For vast majority of fire calls. Yeah, anyone, so. I'll check that if you may. I remember it was always three busy, so it surprised me if they filled it much. And we don't, in fact, we have to be a fire hunter, so.
So what was the transparency then, of the new cameras being different from the old ones?
Well, it's, the change really is, and actually, you see Channel Five, they give out a little bit of a profile about it. Um it's shared at night, but um there's not a huge difference between our old cameras and new cameras, though. The uh the things that they'll do, the new system is better, it's better technology. So it's one of the coolest things that you can do now, um put case files, videos, if you have a picture or whatever. Also, say like, if you have something in your house, if your main door camera caught it, I can send you a link. Uh upload it and first write in a case file. And come on part of the whole system, definitely, uh every picture, every video, everything, all like there.
That's more professional than like upload it to Google Drive.
Right, and and part of the issues that we were having is that. Whole system is very, they had their company, those body cameras as well, and then we said, county, the DA, the office, and the defense attorney. You got that there, but there was pictures they restored in the RMS system, in a different file, and then, you know, and videos, and they're part of the CPR, they restored in the RMS. Now, we're just, everything's together, and that way we make sure that we're getting uh all the information and the time and the capacity we can get, and that for the cases. And it makes, you know, actually, the thing you asked about the uh sharing video live.
Yeah.
Has that given, but so there's a nuance there about, you know, sharing, I. I don't necessarily want to share live video if someone has like, you know, some mental health call that we go on, and somebody's in the, you know, frozen or crisis. And you had, and, you know, spearing it all over the board, it's not fair to them, you know what I'm saying, so. Uh it is a good idea to some degree, um I just don't know the logistics behind it, or how you would actually do that. Uh a virtual or onshore, I'm sure, but it's almost supposed to be done, and it might be that I can, you know, some of the best shit, and I agree with you in some way.
It would be recording most of the shift, right? I think they're normally recording most of the shifts, right?
They, yes, so the body cameras and in cars have approved, so it's like, it's all with.
Yeah, basically.
But they have to have, but the. We can go back and get it if they don't save it, but it's not as high quality, um so they're all technically recording, and they also don't have audio. So it's just video, and you have to, and you have to, they'll capture like the first, third, second, whatever, your report is, and engage that.
So if you wanted to save a little shit, you'd probably need a license.
Like a ten barrel, you know, right after.
Okay.
Because you're recording a higher resolution and audio, or an entire ship. So we have policies that, you know, traffic stop laws. You have contact, you know, send this in, maybe it is, you know, sour in some way, or have, you know, confirmation, you have to turn the body camera on. If you just wanted to do a business check, you put your, you know, uh, you have the station right near the port, you don't need, you know, you don't need. Forty-five minutes to send it, you're typing it forward, you know, there's no value management of every time, every like. There's storage, you gotta take storage shit, so I mean, so yes, it's not on twenty-four seven in the in the term that, you know. Go down, download eight hours of, ten hours of video, but we do have the capability, if someone forgot to turn their camera on. And if you want to go back and get it, we have a new facility, go back and get at least some more quality video.
I bet the next generation will be able to.
God only knows what the next generation will be doing, you know, you're not both of them, the technology is advancing so fast, especially with the AI stuff.
Storage is such a. And I don't know what your days per hour ratio is, but like, I drive to be like five hundred and twelve games now, like, there's the cheese, they're having with their new micro time, so. It's like, you know, but the other problem is storing it, yeah, there's so much expense there, but, you know, you still have to transfer. You know, and, you know, as your videos get bigger and bigger, because your. Resolution goes up and down, you know, yeah, I can send it to you, but you need to download it to your computer.
Right, exactly, you know, so it's, it's a balance, and we're all trying to work through what the hell is, you know, the the good balance versus bad balance. You know, what's practical, what's not practical, what is, you know, caught in the sky, you know, right, this guy costs. So it's, it's, it's a balance, and we're trying to do, you know, like I said. Oh, like transcribe, yeah, that's pretty cool, so, and it's actually, it's actually kind of really scary stuff, because it'll. It's able to identify the officer.
Of who's, do you think?
Yeah, and the other person, it's, it's all kinds of freak stuff, yeah. But it's fairly accurate, and you still have to, it says the makes, the officer, but when you're reporting, and put it in that clip here, and it gives a certain point of action.
See, for the.
It would have been.
Yes, number one. And I use that for. When was this mentioned?
It's scary.
Even the president, like a community happening, or for.
It's scary stuff. Yeah, I mean, you might not do hard at that, for like, the new stuff, but the old stuff. How accurate is that? So there's a couple, you can see there are.
Sorry, it's in the car? The officer's driver, their camera's in the car?
They can, they have, like I said, that's how we have a cable, we got a cable like that that attaches to them, so that way they jump out far. Not tethered to their, ribbon on their USBs, so yeah, they have. The camera live, right now, will invite us to passing down. If they put them on the charges, they do.
And so they should.
Show.
And all these suitcases, so. In their life, because he's out of room, I mean, I don't know what he wants.
There are a couple of them.
Did his money.
They actually, we have five Gs going forward right now, and they can't, and what are your plans?
But even though they're on YouTube sites. Cause it's suicide sound shorts, like, I'm going for like a month, two years, like, how?
Now, what it does is picks.
Because of the actual stop.
Cars, well, actually, the cameras down. And we don't have to. Can't, they can't. I imagine if you're not having, you have to put in the back of the log, uploading, something to dig today, in Horizon, yeah, we have wireless.
Or through whoever's wifi is on, or like this. Or through whoever's.
Right, right.
That's what they're doing there. I understand you want to see why cam video is not considering of the record.
Uh there's.
Five miles later, he's like, are we coming? I gosh, god, cause.
I want to see. Right, you know, I want fifty hours.
Five minutes. She was ten minutes late to the reservation, she's sad.
That doesn't mean we can't release videos, so.
His chapter says. There, there is a timing, I think, yes, there is, that is. He likes the.
Right, yeah, yeah, so it's a, it's a, you know, it's not a complete restriction, people get access to it.
Usually, yeah, usually, unless they've been. Unless it's been a bad. And they're going home.
Everything's like five years, and then like the five year old. Yeah, I I mean, the reality is, you try to keep them on. Two years.
Well, it's.
Yeah, well, it actually started over here at the. Oh, and ended over this, this. Aye. What else new? Oh, you got any names? Really, which, which side of across? Right, right across. I have not been over there, it's like, it's a little. Chance standing at it. It's actually supposed to be fairly nice to be, just because. Actually, you're sixty on Sunday. They moved in, like, the day after, it was not. Oh, right. And there were some, previous people had to be out, avoid some, so they were like moving out, in this.
In this.
That was our conversation. Yeah, exactly. Only.
I shuffled out.
It was funny. Well.
I lived around the corner of the house and like. So we get to it. Still, yeah, it's about two inches up there. Well, that's why it's not working. You don't have gas. You don't have gas.
No.
So. Or resistive heat. Super. So. And went out there and trudled around and. And sprayed it off. Get the ice. Which was, you know, both freezing as well.
On an arm pole to the chief's stadium. But those.
As long as they hear someone. And what it de-robbed. So it was actually. Well, the reason.
I, I do. I mean, they are so. I mean, it's a little different.
Wasn't the cameras working? Do you know one?
Yeah.
Get dressed, Hannah.
I can tell you it was so. The line used to.
Probably went after everybody.
I got to. And she. Has someone. Has, but she was playing. In store. And, and she was, and she had a. Worked and did that. She. And that's like. Excellent.
You just stay in because I'm supposed to do that? No, I didn't.
The work, the work.
Everybody.
The work's carried out because this is on the.
Okay, unless you just send to us a file, we're gonna do Mary Brett for Mary Creed.
Yeah, I'm only saying because it's involved. That involves me. I will be there in the morning. I'll be.
Yeah, we'll talk about it. At, at your.
Yeah. I'll be on the way to your town. I will be there. Yeah. I am. Just so you know.
Not New York.
Just so you know. I am.
You're getting an award.
For that.
Best boss ever.
Not really that award, but. Pretty sure I won't ever get that award.
See you in the morning. Head phone in there.
Yes. Just. Yeah. Yeah, I'm good. Good numbers. Yeah. I think this is gonna be, January is gonna be close to the.
January.
But we're close to days. Let me see if that's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's about six thousand hours from close to days. We made a little bit of money from online registrations, but. One more post. Sunday is a slow day, so. I mean, I probably fixed that. It probably will. Monday's.
Really?
Visitation and. Revenue. It is cold in here. I am like literally in my home.
I'm usually not. Cold more than it's bad, but my hands are cold.
I have gloves. Just telling you. They're pretty, they're pink. Are they have pink highlights? Of course, I don't know if you're paying by the week, they're. They are taking.
Right.
I don't need more stadium jackets.
For Lauderdale. The day after the. Stay for a day and. On the beach. It's cold in the day.
That's what Ellen said, that he was was cold. Yeah.
First day, I knew that. Snow.
Yeah, for the palm trees with snow on.
It's. I was drinking. They do, they get cold and they'll just like.
They need.
All out of the drink.
Someone should be picking them up.
You're like. Close. Well, twice as even. They want. I think it's on. Well, that's a. They're saying they have huge Amish. Little. In the country. Really? Yes. Because we did take to. To a really cool. River that you know, for these caverns. Waters. It's cold, but we got used to it. And so I was kind of asking like what the industry was. It was kind of farm. And different cultures and so I'm like, yeah, the Amish. Amish. Said, yeah, we did Amish. You know, all the grocery stores that didn't believe their own way for Chinese. So he was just kind of saying the different nationalities and a lot of Chinese that love Amish, a lot of Amish. Yeah, really. But. Tour guides were really. And so we were, we can do this, you know, this recording and everything like. We gotta go. So we had a chicken commoly for lunch after the tour. And so we had this gas station. Oh, it was up over the person.
Yeah.
And so we drive a gas station and I look over and this is a box truck. Yeah, just a box. And then we get it and it says Marion Pandy from China, a box truck. In Belize City, okay? I'm like, oh, yeah, that dress is Marion. And it looked like an old, like, interpress. Box truck. And it was like older, beat up, arrested. It was in fairly good condition. I'm like, flat, like, my, my, I already have. Be able to then when you, I don't think we got to make sure that nobody would believe that that was on that truck.
Yeah.
You have.
Secondhand silver.
I guess. Before, took them from Marion.
Yeah.
All the way down. To Belize City. And that's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, wow, that is so weird. So. Like my.
Kind of like having your Uber driving.
Yeah, that was weird.
My husband was having a driving.
Did you plan that?
No, no. I had no clue. He's a navigator, he's racing, he picked it up. And they.
I was like. Oh, John's. And so he pulls up, he gets out, he's driving, I'm like, oh, God.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah, I mean.
Not at all. No, I took.
You back with.
Four stars.
I know.
Yeah, no. It's. I think it's gonna take more than one Uber trip to ruin his rating. He's done so many.
Oh, yeah. It was dark. Yeah, I mean.
It was like, what, four forty-five?
Yeah, it was.
He went his first joy that.
Where, yeah, one trip we were, but he doesn't carry. She looked at. Six thirty or something like that. I'm like, no. And so it was way, way early. She's like, okay, I gotta read it. And she was of course depressed, but no. Well, yeah, it's. It's something even all the.
Well, because they have, so like this morning, he had a reservation at four. He had to be online at.
Oh, yeah.
So if they make you. Be.
Available.
Available. Now, you can book yourself on a break. You have to be off, you have to be on the app.
Oh, wow.
If you have so many minutes with, like, the four reservation. So, yeah, there are times he's like, their reservations are coming like two hundred. Like, yeah. I think four is about their.
Yeah. We still didn't have a lot of time. Yeah.
No, I, we almost. We almost. Understand. Getting in, we're on time.
She doesn't. So. I'm obviously like here, right here, right at the start of meeting, you know, a few minutes early sometimes to go on the day. I was early tonight, fight your time. But people are like five minutes late and everything, so you just kind of. Yeah, I just say, hey, it takes me five minutes. I'm gonna walk. Yeah. When we go to the airport, I look.
Yeah.
So we were.
It makes you anxious.
Oh, yeah.
We got through security.
Like, that's things.
We got through terminal and of course everything was holding horribly wrong anyway. But here's how late we were. We didn't miss the flight from Chicago.
Were they calling you?
We actually had boarding of A. We were on A, something A like that a year ago. In the bay. When we got there. They were boarding B.
Oh, wow.
I was pissed. I was literally fuming.
Oh, yeah, but you could just.
I'm early everywhere I go. I am early everywhere I go. My DNA just does not allow me to be late. And I was, the steam's going on my ears. I was, I have a camper and so we just snuck in the back of one of the B. And, uh, got on the plane and I was like.
Were you late?
Yes, because I kept telling her we're gonna go in two hours.
Oh, yeah.
She says, oh, we do it an hour and a half. Well, she forgets it when we park in the, in the parking.
Oh, you had.
The shuttle, there aren't that many shuttle buses.
Yeah, that's why you want to park in.
Right, so it's like, it's not like this, you know.
We parked at the parking spot for that.
So it's like fifteen minutes we waited for a shuttle to go. And then, you know, at early in the morning, they only had a handful of security points open. So there was still a line to get through.
Yeah, the anxiety of waiting for K C I buses is, I can't do it. Because especially like internationally, you're supposed to be there two hours in advance. So one of the times we were flying to Mexico, it snowed. And we drove in the snow. The kids were little. It started the first time we were going to Mexico. And it was kind of a, we weren't that late, but we, we were not. On time either. We got out, we got to Denver, luckily. Even though with Casey, uh, you have to fly sometimes else. Fly out. Um, and so after that, I said never again. So we go to the parking spot, make a reservation at the parking spot. They follow you, you know, they're gonna be right there. I gotta know, because when you pull in, they tell you where to go. And within minutes, a little bus is coming around the H M. I, it probably costs a little bit more than long term in K C I, but my anxiety level is better.
I think they need to discount it.
We do it through the app to get it discounted, yeah. So when we go to Mexico in a few weeks, his mom and dad will come up and stay at our house. And then we'll all go together because that trip, we all met there. And here. His dad, the older he is, he. Rusted in the airport the last time we were in school. And they all get up and go. It was for, well, we lost, it was the second loss. It was for Lord's graduation. For his school. And, um, everybody gets up and comes to me and pray. Like, there is all God's in the bathroom, whatever. And I'm sitting there and I'm kind of playing and you're like, babe. It's in the room. I almost cried. And I'm like, are, are you okay? Like, what's going on? I would have never thought I would fold another three hundred. Wait, what is this guy? Are you talking about? He's only thirteen, hardly sixteen, but then I, you just.